I call this meeting to order. Please silence your cell phones. We're gonna make a little, a few changes here in the order of the way things are getting done. We have two council members who are not feeling well, so they're remoting in. So we're gonna go right to the special business and then we're gonna go to the public hearing, and then we'll continue with the normal rotation of the conference meeting. So if we would all stand for the invocation from Councilmember Briggs, please.
Council President, please join me in the Our Father, the Lord's Prayer.
Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come; thy will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us, and lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil.
Pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I will assign the resolution items, please. Resolution eight, 2022, the architecture firm contract. Ms. Briggs? And Resolution nine, 2022, the Human Resources Director, ten position, Ms. Pacino. Okay, Ms. Briggs, start it off, please.
Thank you, Council President. I move a resolution of the City Council of the City of Batavia, authorizing the execution of an agreement for architecture and engineering for the building of the new police facility.
Seconded by Mr. McGinnis. Any questions or concerns? Okay, call the roll, please.
Councilmember Briggs?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Ms. Schmidt? You might be on mute.
Yep.
Okay. Go ahead.
Byakowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Pacino?
Yes.
Canali?
Mr. Canali?
Yep.
I get it.
Okay. Resolution nine, 2022, Ms. Pacino, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move a resolution to create a temporary position of Human Resources Director.
Seconded by Mr. McGinnis. Any questions or concerns? Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Pacino?
Yes.
Canali?
Ms. Canali?
Yes. Yep.
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Ms. Schmidt?
Yep.
Go ahead.
Byakowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes. Okay. A motion to adjourn the special business meeting. Ms. McGinnis? Seconded by Ms. Pacino. Call the roll, please.
Councilmember McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Any?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Byakowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Pacino?
Yes.
Canali?
Mr. Canali?
Yep.
Okay. I now open the regular conference meeting, and I start off with the public hearing. So I will look for a motion to open the public hearing to introduce the ordinance amending 190 entitled, Chapter 190 entitled zoning of the City of Batavia Municipal Code, to amend the zoning map of the City of Batavia. So who would make that motion? Ms. Briggs? And seconded by Ms. Pacino. And call the roll, please.
Councilmember Briggs?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Schmidt?
Yep.
Thank you. Next?
Byakowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Pacino?
Yes.
Canali?
Mr. Canali?
Yep.
Thank you.
McGinnis?
Yes.
McGinnis. Are there any speakers? Anyone like to speak that maybe neglected to sign up or didn't realize they had to? You're more than welcome to come up and speak. This would be in reference to the public hearing only. Okay, no one? A motion to close the public hearing? Mr. Byakowski? Seconded by Mr. McGinnis. Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Byakowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Pacino?
Yes.
Canali?
Mr. Canali, please.
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Ms. Schmidt?
Yep.
Thank you. Okay, the public hearing is closed. Any public comments at all?
Yes.
Okay. All speakers should have signed up in advance with the city clerk. Each speaker will please use the podium. Please state your name and address before beginning your statement. Each speaker will be limited to five minutes. Please address your comments to the chair. Council will not engage or debate with the speaker. Your first bell means you have 30 seconds left. Your second bell, I'm gonna have to stop you. So please kind of wrap it up. Call the first one, please.
Brian McCarthy?
Good evening. My name is Brian McCarthy from Five Carolwood Drive here in Batavia. I'm honored to be here on behalf of the David M. McCarthy Memorial Foundation, along with Guy Pellegrino. We're here to discuss the naming rights topic for the ice rink. Guy came to us and said when this proposal came out that he wanted to do this not necessarily for his business, but in honor of his teammate and friend and my brother, David McCarthy. Our family was just blown away that he wanted to do this, and we thought, well, what can we do? And what we bring to the table is a foundation, a charitable foundation that is passionate about improving and supporting youth athletics in Genesee County. We're very proud of our long and diverse list of organizations we've been able to support over the past 15 years. And the other thing we bring to the equation going forward with the ice rink is a very passionate following from the community and support from the community. We have a huge golf tournament every June where we raise money to support youth athletics, and it's become a very big event, and the community has just been amazing in supporting us. So we're excited to take kind of that recipe and join forces with the people that have been working hard for years to make the ice rink an amazing place, and maybe even add a little more to the equation. I can't thank Guy enough for stepping up and doing this, and on the foundation side, we're just, we're so excited to dig in and help continue to make the ice rink an amazing place. Guy and I aren't just coming from this on this side of the equation. This hits the bullseye for all angles for us. We're both coaching our youngest sons at the beginner level, so we've been talking about it through this whole process. We've got an amazing hockey adventure we're just embarking on, coaching together. You talk about the future of the ice rink over the next 10 years, nobody's more invested than these two guys. We're gonna be living down the street here at the ice rink, and we're very excited about it. We're here to ask for your support today in naming the ice rink after my brother, Guy's friend, our captain, Dave McCarthy. So, you know, we'll know he'll be looking over us on our hockey journey, and he'll be looking over every family that walks through those doors at the ice rink. Again, I'm honored to be here and I really appreciate your time tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just wanna say, just two things, because I'm sure you're assigned up.
Go ahead.
Very, very ecstatic about the opportunity. We appreciate it, and honestly, it couldn't be named after a better human being. The outpouring of love and support that we've gotten over the naming rights has been tremendous. And I think you remember, sir, back with your ice hockey days with your son and with his brother, I couldn't find, and I don't think you can find, a better person to have the name on that building. So I had the pleasure of growing up with Dave, playing hockey with Dave, best friends with Dave, and honestly, this is probably one of my most special things I've ever embarked on, and honestly, I hope we have all your support, and we are very committed, not only just in the naming rights, but in, as Brian said, through coaching and being involved down at the rink, we're gonna make it a better place. And with the foundation's support, I think we're gonna make it a lot better than it is today. So that's one of the reasons why I wanted a 10-year commitment. I don't want a five-year, I wanted a 10-year, because I really think that we can do a lot of good things down there to help out, and we're really excited about it, and the rink is very special to both of us. We grew up there and taught us a lot about life, and we learned a lot, and we had a lot of great coaches. So really excited, and thank you all for the opportunity, and we hope we have your blessing moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other?
That's all.
Any council comments, public comments?
Sounds good.
I just want to thank you.
I just, I have an eight-year-old that spent some time at the rink and a four-year-old who's thinking of trying it. I couldn't agree more. It's a wonderful thing.
Yeah, thank you for getting involved and thinking about the long term and not just a couple-year deal, because it definitely needs some ownership from the public to, with the foundation and so on, to really put your elbow grease into the rink. And we wanna do whatever we can to help, but we're limited in some ways.
Any help you can provide is awesome.
Absolutely.
Anyone else?
No, sounds great.
John or Tammy, did you want to say anything?
This is Tammy. Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to say that, you know, my son grew up at the rink, and now my grandson is at the rink. I spent countless hours at the rink running hockey tournaments, and I'm very proud of this proposal and the name that's going out, and I hope you're gonna do great things. I appreciate it, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Tammy. John, did you want to say anything?
No, actually, just other than excited to see things happening at the rink again. Just any progress that we make with the rink moving forward with naming rights, just making the place a better place for our hockey players and hockey families. I'm all for it. It brings a lot of tourism into the city, and it gives the kids a great place to play. So very proud of it all.
Thank you, John. Gino?
Yeah, I'd just like to thank Mr. Pellegrino and Mr. McCarthy. It's great to see somebody local. I mean, this could have been some out-of-town person advertising some new soda or something. Yeah, thank you, guys. Guy, I see your dad all the time, so it's something else we can talk about. Thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you, everyone. Moving on. The next City Council Business Meeting to be held Monday, February 14, 2022, 7:00 PM at the City Hall Council Boardroom, second floor. Budget work sessions tonight, right after the council meeting tomorrow at 6:00 PM. We'll be looking at the DPW budget. Monday, January 31 is Police and Fire, and Monday, February 7, if we need a final meeting, we'll have it then. Any questions on any of that so far? Okay, this is listed as cloven hoofed animals. I really intended it to be more like farm animals. What we've had in the last year, we've had a couple interesting cases where people were, had multiple goats on their property, and it kind of disrupted the neighborhood. And I, you know, I don't know what we can do, if anything. I don't know what the public input is on this, but I wanted to start the conversation and at least have maybe direction from council if we wanna, with time permitting, I mean, this is kind of a busy time of year with budget, but when things open up in a few weeks, if we can look and see what other municipalities have done, maybe, and start tossing around, see what the public thinks, if they like the idea of kind of maybe somewhat limiting it and regulating it a little bit. If you wanna have a pet animal, that's one thing, but you have multiple goats in a backyard, I mean, they're kind of loud, and they scream, and they make weird noises, and they also leave a lot of dung laying around. So maybe we should just have some kind of oversight on it. I mean, it's not something you'd really expect to see in the city. I don't know how much property is needed. I'm not an animal expert, but maybe we need to provide that if someone's gonna do this, they're gonna have to have the proper backyard for it and not be, you know, where a person has to wake up with a goat screaming right outside their bedroom window, you know, 5:00 in the morning or whatever. Those were some of the complaints that I received. So just, I don't know how do you guys feel about it as council? Do you think we should at least kind of keep it on the list? I mean, as a low priority, but at least to try to find out more about what's going on, because we did receive the two complaints, and I don't know if that's a trend or just a weird accident.
If it's disturbing someone, I think we need to look into it.
Yeah, it was, it was two individual people, and they were, you know, very qualified individuals that, you know, weren't just trying to make trouble, they really had a genuine concern, so. I think we should look into it. Bob, did you have anything to add to that?
Yeah, well, I spoke to some of the parties, as you did, a couple years ago, but I had a similar type thing, and when I discussed it with code, they said, well, there's a difference between farm animals and a pet. So if you have a lamb, and it's a pet, and it's named as a pet, there's nothing they could do about it. However, the case I had in one of my neighbors, they weren't very neat, but they had Saint Bernard's, which probably leave as much waste as a small goat, and we couldn't use our backyard in the summer because the flies were so bad, they didn't clean up after themselves. And I turned it over to the county health department as a health issue, and it was resolved really quick, very quick. And I had suggested this to the people, call the health department, it's a health issue. If there's a large amount of waste, there's gonna be flies and odor and all that, and, you know, I think the county health department would respond, but it gets complicated, there's no doubt about it. I have no problems discussing this in the future, but it'd be nice if there was more of a rapid resolution to it, so.
Right. I mean, we did try to, you know, resolve it by, you know, making requests and, you know, trying to find out what was going on, and we found it was a gray area. It wasn't the same as a dog or a cat or something else, there was just nothing in there. And again, I don't want to prevent people from, if they have a horse and that's their means of transportation, which some communities do that in Pennsylvania, certain people, that's all they do is travel by horse. I wouldn't want to prevent someone from living in the city and not having their transportation. But I'm talking more of goats and geese and ducks, things that make a lot of noise, even a rooster. And I was told that Rochester has certain regulations on chickens, I gathered. So, you know, nothing like, you know, if you're working the midnight shift and you just put your head to the pillow and hear a rooster out your bedroom window, it's kind of makes you angry. So I just thought we should at least be talking about it, and I promised the two individuals during that time that at some point we would bring it up at a council meeting. And I'm, there's really no good time, but I mean, we gotta start somewhere. So if we can maybe just, you know, a non-emergency, non-urgent, because I know we have short-staffing ourselves and so on, but at least to keep that active and at least within timeframes, maybe an hour a month if they have time to look into it, and at least we'll make progress eventually and get it done.
So find out what other communities are doing.
Yeah, at least start the process and see if, what we can do, if we can't do anything, if other communities have tried it and it's not worked out for various legal reasons, if we're not allowed to do it, I mean, I don't know. So I would at least like to find out what our options are, and before we start whipping out resolutions and code changes, I'd at least like to get more information as to what our options are, what we can do with it, and then if it's not feasible, then we're not gonna waste city time to put hundreds of hours into something that's not worth doing. So Rachel, did you have anything you'd like to add to that?
No, I'd just like to clarify, are you directing me to look into all types of animals on city property, or specifically goats, or cloven hoofed animals, which would be considered sheep, goats, horse and cattle?
I'm suggesting more of animals that would normally be considered for being raised on a farm for either food or eggs or whatever. I mean, we should see, I mean, normally, it's just not the place for it, because we just don't have the room in most of the backyards in the community to have goats. But I don't know anything about it. Maybe I'm missing something. So I guess I would just like to have, because in the past, there was, somebody had a lot of ducks and geese, and that was causing a neighborhood problem too over on, I don't want to say the street and start pointing fingers, but, and we were, again, in a dark area, we were a gray area, we just couldn't do anything about it. So, you know, I'm not saying to regulate it out of business, I'm just saying to maybe create a process where we can make sure that the animals are gonna be treated humanely and safely, and there's enough room for them, and they're not gonna disturb everybody around the place, which could be up to four to five houses would be around a normal house. You could have a lot of people upset over someone raising a few chickens or whatever. And I get the fact of wanting to do that, but the city is really not commonly the place that that is done.
I mean, we live in the city, and I know this is more for people that live on farms.
Right. But again, I don't know, maybe I'm missing something. Maybe this is something new. So I at least would like to get some more information. What have other communities done? What are they allowed to do? Is it worth it? And then we'll have some time for public feedback over the next few weeks, and if it's, if the public is against it and they want the farm animals in the city, then that's fine by me. I'll listen to the people. Any other questions or concerns? Anything, Tammy, John, did you want to add to that?
Gino, I'll jump in. I would like to stay fairly neutral on this situation, in that if this isn't the situation you're referring to, I do have the same situation. Right involved with my neighbors, and it has created some problems between neighbors. I too received complaints about it, and I'm very apprehensive about making a move anyway, because I get along with all my neighbors tremendously well, and I certainly don't want to put myself in a situation where I upset some neighbors and don't upset other neighbors and take sides and things. So if the situation comes down to where it is one of the situations in my neighborhood, involving my neighbors right around me, my immediate neighbors, I would certainly recuse myself from it, just simply because I don't want to be put in that position where I'm favoring one neighbor over another.
Totally understand. And one of the complaints I received was your neighborhood there, so, well, I'd at least like to look into it.
So, and like I say, I will stay neutral on it, and I'll counsel to direct city management to do whatever you feel is necessary. Certainly, certainly is worthy of investigating it. Gino, I'm with you on that, that we should look into the situation and find out how we can make it palatable for everybody at all, so.
That's my thoughts, John. Thank you. Anyone else like to add something? So at this point, Rachel, if we could just do more of a fact finding thing, when you get time, maybe sometime after the budget, end of February-ish or something, or even into March, just look into it and give us just some options, what other communities are doing, and then we'll pick up the conversation from there. Thank you. Batavia Development Corporation, 2022, presentation? You need the?
Yes, sir.
Okay. You guys gonna be doing it from the podium?
That's okay.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna bring this up where you guys are talking, so they can hear you, and then I'll sit over nearby, so my Bluetooth stays connected.
Angie, do I have anything to say here, or have you got that from here?
No, I'm just, you know.
Okay.
You can tell jokes while it starts up. I mean, it's very quiet in here.
I know, I honestly, when you said I was going after a goat discussion, I thought you were actually, like, messing around, so I didn't really, I didn't think it was a real thing.
We actually moved the animals. Yeah, that's kind of the official name, I guess.
I thought you were.
What's conduct business?
Yeah.
Well, you didn't break out in Goat Boy, so that was good.
Hey, that's true. No Goat Boy. I was gonna have a Bill's joke, but nobody's in the mood for that now.
No. Yeah. When Kathy says too soon.
You can't do that. We're in mourning.
We are, we are.
Those are my calls, we make a phone call here.
Hey, Brett, while we wait, why don't you tell us what these lovely things are?
Okay, I can go for that. So everybody has three project trackers. One is for New York Main Street Grant, one is for the DRI Grant, and one is for the DRI Building Improvement Fund. So what they have is, that's a handout that we generate. We have it every monthly board meeting that shows the status of every project that we currently have out, whether it's the RFP, whether it's finished with construction. So just a nice visual that we can hand out to people and kind of keep everybody in the mood where all our projects currently stand. All right, looks like projects, the trackers ready to go.
You turn it on first.
It's on.
Oh. Turn it off and on.
Laser. Doesn't look like it changed anything. Angie's going to help. Now, your old one's gonna float. This went a lot smoother than I had.
Well, you did set up, right? I mean, you practiced it, and it went great on setup.
Come up here, it's ready to go. All right, now, yeah. All right. Council President, members of council, I'd like to thank you first for allowing me to present to you tonight. For those of you who I haven't had the privilege of meeting, my name's Brett Frank, I'm the Director of Economic Development for the Batavia Development Corporation. Started in that position September, so we're just closing in on about five months. So question that comes up all the time, why is economic development important? I believe economic development is important because it fosters private investment, business investments which create jobs and diversifies industry, creates building investments via new build or the rehabilitation of existing buildings. Economic development creates business retention and expansion, but most importantly, in my opinion, it improves residents' quality of life and gives our city sustainability and So one thing I kind of wanted to go over real quick, I wanted to give you all, kind of provide you with a little information about the City of Batavia, its residents, its workforce, and its housing situation. So the 2020 census showed that the City of Batavia has roughly a population of 15,600 people. And as you can see, median age for a City of Batavia resident is roughly about 31 years of age. Looking countywide, we're actually still, over the next 20 years, predicting a decline in population, especially between the ages of 25 and 64 years old. Business and labor force. So the City of Batavia labor force is actually comprised of roughly about 9,500 people. Only about 2,250 estimated jobs are filled by City of Batavia residents, which means they have roughly 7,300 people who commute to work in the City of Batavia on a daily basis. The top industries by jobs are as follows. Number one is healthcare for social services, two is manufacturing, three is retail, and four is public administration. Housing. I'd like to spend a quick second on housing. I'd like to show that the housing stock in the City of Batavia, and that roughly 52% of Batavia residents are actually homeowners, which leaves 48% of them are renters. A key thing to remember here is that there's a shift happening in younger generations who are actually kind of moving away from the traditional home purchase and the rehabilitation of that home to this move towards quality rentals that are kind of closer to downtown, closer to the amenities that accommodate their, you know, active lifestyles. So I'm sure this comes as no surprise to any of you, but the City of Batavia is still in need of more market rate housing, market rate apartments. All right. So what does the BDC do? As an extension of the City of Batavia, the Batavia Development Corporation strives to follow the city in their planning initiatives, whether it be creating investments in the city's opportunity area, working within the city's comprehensive plan, or following the strategic investment plan in part in the downtown rehabilitation initiative. So for this year's presentation, I'd like to address the following topics. Kind of go over a brief history of the BDC and the successes of the organization, touch on a few of the current projects and programs the BDC is working on in the City of Batavia, and finally touch on the future of the BDC, its goals, and economic development. Just a brief overview of the BDC and what our mission is. The Batavia Development Corporation was established in 1994. BDC is currently a nonprofit charitable 501(c)(3) local development corporation. The objectives of the BDC are to improve the quality of life within the City of Batavia through planning, collaboration, and programming, encourage retention and development of small businesses. The objectives of the BDC are to improve the quality of life within the city of Batavia through planning, collaboration, programming, encourage retention and development of small business, promote additional and maximum employment opportunities, and also retain and enhance the community's fiscal base and also attract new business. So very important slide right here. If you're Jerry Maguire, I'm a do Jerry Maguire, scream "Show me the money," right? But typically what happens when projects take place in the city of Batavia, they'll go through a reassessment process. So what does the city of Batavia receive from these projects and programs? In terms of assessed values, the projects the BDC has worked with that have been completed have actually shown an increase in assessed value of over $5.79 million from previous assessments. This in turn creates sustainable revenue for the city of Batavia. So if, for example, you're just to use the 2021 tax rate of $9.72 per $1,000 assessed value, that equates to $56,291 in added revenue for the city. And with over $50 million of investment in projects that will be completed in the next one to three years, that will continue to increase the city's assessed values dramatically. Placement is also key with the BDC and businesses that we work. But they want to be located in thriving communities in either rehabilitated or new buildings. And they also want to be centralized location-wise. The BDC helps to facilitate placement. Example of that is Main Street Theater 56, which actually leases formerly vacant parcels from the city of Batavia that now generates over $44,000 of annual revenue for the city. And initially, the BDC has delivered over 105 RLF loans, which are revolving loan funds to option the nerves of the city, sustainable growth of sales tax, mortgage taxpayers. There's been increased downtown housing market with the creation of market rate apartments, working to reduce unemployment by creating and retaining jobs, increased tourism and downtown flip traffic. And the goal is to create vibrant, unique, walkable community that is attractive to all generations for years to come. So what I've created here is actually a map of downtown business improvement district. Some white guy here is white dots that indicate projects that the BDC has worked with on various levels. Most of the locations on the map are grant authorities through our New York Main Street or DRI programs. Others have been consulted with by the BDC and kind of helped them work through the projects and through different processes in receiving grants. So as you can see, the BDC has been very busy in the past. And we're currently working on about 18 projects that are currently on that map and there's over 30 maps, 30 projects shown on that particular map. So what can I say other than the future of the city of Batavia is bright? In 2022, we anticipate several milestone projects to commence construction with a total investment of over $50 million through the three grant programs, DRI, New York Main Street program, Downtown Revitalization Initiative, Building Improvement Fund. We currently have 18 projects, like I said earlier, at various stages. We've got one that's all the way in the beginning stages in environmental testing, two ones that are just ramping up construction and ready for reimbursement. So we've gotten from each end of the spectrum. Our mission. So the city of Batavia is known state-wide as an economic development friendly city. It's evident by the success that we've had and we will continue to have. The city of Batavia also has been the case study for several New York State DOS smart growth studies that covered the city's creative ways to spur economic development and rehabilitation to our community. So this is basically a simple little brochure that we put together. It's a little tribal piece. The BDC has implemented unique programs that will result in successful development in the future. The BDC will continue to work with our business development partners to create a brighter future for the city of Batavia and heighten our area for future developments. So DRI, Batavia's Pathway of Prosperity Brownfield Opportunity Areas. The BDC will continue to promote the DRI and New York Main Street projects to showcase all the transformations the city will see in the next few years and attract developer interest. We will use our BCT2 fund to spur public infrastructure improvement. So with that particular program, when an eligible city project receives a pilot, it will contribute 50% of its payments into the fund for years of public infrastructure costs. These costs include, but aren't limited to, things like water, sewer lines, sidewalks, green spaces, roadways, basically all things that are a benefit to a community as a whole. So we will continue to develop our brownfield, our opportunity areas, and address those key findings and needs. We have goals made, these parcels ready to develop, employees in the alley over the brownfield cleanup program. And once those are developed, they will bring substantial private and public investment into our city and better our economy and the city's overall fiscal position. The BDC strives to continue to work to ensure a bright future again for the city of Batavia. There's a really handsome guy right there in this picture. So as I begin, as I begin to ramp up, I'd like to say that I'm excited about the future of the city of Batavia. We have many amazing projects on the horizon and we don't want to stop there. We'll see more shovels in the ground and brains in the sky in 2022 and hopefully long into the future. So if one project is completed, we want to have another one either beginning or waiting in the wings to take its place. Through these projects and programs, the goal of the BDC is to create a vibrant city that people want to work in, live in, and play in. There's an old and quite frankly probably overused saying, "The economic development is not a spring in America." But the statement's extremely true. And as long as we continue to run the race, we will create the quality of life in the vibrant downtown that we want everybody to enjoy. So the results the BDC has achieved and the future goals that we'll attain carry a positive impact to our city's quality of life for generations to come. In my personal opinion, I can leave this critical. We do not recite this. And we continue to work hard every day to help encourage projects from the starting line to the finish line and continue that process for years to come. I'd like to thank you all for your guidance and your support and for allowing me to present tonight. Thank you. If you have any questions, comments, or concerns?
Sounds good.
I'm still at the podium.
I have a question. I hope I'm not going all the way off to the berry bush here. But how does bid fit into this?
What's that?
How does bid fit into this?
How does bid fit into that?
Yeah.
The Business Improvement District?
Yes, sir.
That is typically, that's kind of the main focus of where we want to see development. Is that our downtown corridor where we've got the most activity? It's also our highest assessed value area in the city of Batavia as far as business is concerned. So and that goes back to creating the vibrant kind of downtown corridor.
Right. Thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you very much. You folks are good work.
I shall too. Thank you.
Okay, the next item I have is the seeker for 145 and 147 Pearl Street.
Jill's gonna come up and speak a little bit about the seeker.
Can you guys hear Jill? Go ahead, Jill, can you?
So at this point, anything else is aware that the rezoning for 145 and 147 Pearl went before Planning and Development Committee on December 14th. And then scheduled a public hearing, which was held before I'm speaking. And the next steps are to evaluate the state environmental quality review forms that are in your packet, and then of course, take action on the matter. Any questions?
Any questions, anyone? A reference to the 147 and 145 Pearl? Seeker recommendations should be in your packets. Did you find any concerns when you were going through this? Did anything jump out at you? And you had to, was it pretty much standard?
This is a standard action. So there wasn't anything that stood out for me in terms of the seeker, the state environmental quality review. So typically with a rezoning, you're doing a seeker, you're evaluating to make sure that you're not making any huge missteps. And so this is not out of the norm.
Is everything, you're basically saying everything was pretty much straightforward when you went through it?
Correct. This is going from a P1 district to an R2, which is residential, which as we've discussed previously is more appropriate for these parcels.
Okay, so is everyone in council in favor of moving this to? What business is this? Will it be the next one, Rachel, or a future?
February 14th business meeting.
So this will be moved to the February 14th business meeting? Are all in favor of doing that?
Yes.
Okay, that's gonna move?
Yep.
Thank you. Now the zoning amendment for 145 and 147 Pearl.
I was gonna say, yeah, once. So same situation. So that's the actual action that you're taking. So the first step is to evaluate the state environmental quality review forms. The second is to take action on the proposed rezoning, so 145 and 147.
So any questions on that? So are we in all favor of moving that to the next business meeting?
Yes.
Okay, that gets moved?
Yeah.
Septage rate increase?
Thank you, Council President. Currently, we accept septic bulk haulers at the wastewater treatment plant at a rate of $35 per 1,000 gallons. And after review at the budget sessions, myself and Bill Davis, the Superintendent of Water and Waste, discussed that we should increase this price to $40 per 1,000 gallons to cover our cost of treating that waste. And that we also should consider every truck that comes into the facility at full capacity. Sometimes trucks say they're half or three quarters full. Specific septic waste questions, I will have Bill answer.
So what you're saying is that people show up with a full tank and say they only have half, and then they pay for half?
I'm not saying that at all. I'm saying to make it fair for everyone.
That way it won't happen then? Because then it'll be a full tank whether you're a full tank...
We're not questioning anyone at all. We want, any tank that comes in is $40 per 1,000 gallons.
Any questions for Rachel or Bob?
Yeah, two questions. One, how did you arrive at the rate of $40 per 1,000?
So we reviewed how much we get, and I'll ask Bill if you remember how much we bring in annually.
I'm sure the amount we bring in, where we came up with the price, is we basically asked other wastewater treatment plants what they are charging. And $40 and $45 is the industry standard. And 35 was on the very low end of that.
Okay, and the other question? What about, like, Lewis has charged him 42, Ben there's charged him 45, why don't we just charge 42 of them?
Because again, the average is right around 45. And we just figured we'd raise it up by dollars.
You said the average is 45?
Yeah, some places are getting more. Different places we have chapped. And we just figured a $5 price increase would be sufficient.
Okay, so you're increasing it to $5 over what it was?
Yes.
Well, basically, like you heard him say, it's a $5 increase over the previous rate. And that's basically in line with the average rates based on our higher year, or that's about the average rate. Hey, any other questions for Bill? All right, so we in favor of moving this to our next business meeting? Okay, yes, and Tammy and John?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Budget resolutions that require a public hearing?
Thank you, Council President. You have two resolutions in your packet this evening that I'm asking that you move to the February 14th business meeting to then schedule a public hearing. It's the budget ordinance and also the local law on the water rate. We discussed at a high level the budget during my presentation. And we'll be getting into the specifics of that throughout our budget meetings. But this officially begins our process to move these resolutions to conclusion in a final budget.
Well, this is all part of the standard procedure. We do this around this time in preparation for being on time to vote on the budget, as we just said.
That's correct.
Any questions on that? Okay, so we're in favor of moving that forward to the business meeting? Okay, that's gonna be moving forward. Capital resolution, 2022?
Yep, and I put an amended resolution on your table. And I just wanted to explain the change. The Richmond Harvester project was listed twice. So I've since removed that. So it's only listed once on the resolution. So the one laid on your table will be considered the resolution to move forward. We're bringing this resolution slightly earlier than we normally do. Normally, you would see this at the second meeting in February, where it's introduced and voted on in March. However, we have several water plant projects that we'd like to get started. And to do so, we need council's approval in capital resolution form to do so. I've put on the memo the new projects we're adding that you haven't seen yet, which include Walnut Street, Ice Rank project for interior improvements, the multiple water plant projects that include a precipitator, Lyman Faric feeders, backwash pump improvements, and interior water plant improvements. Also, three other projects came out of our capital planning sessions with our engineers GHD for the sewer, which include sewer bypass repairs for the valves at the wastewater treatment ponds, Maple and Mill Street sanitary sewer project, and overall sewer lining improvements. So the reason I'm asking for this to come a month in advance is so that we can get started on the much needed water plant projects.
And this will allow the public hearings to go in place on the 28th? Is that that one, or is that, that was the budget? They're gonna not be...
This has nothing to do with the budget. This is an annual resolution that council passes.
Right.
But I'm bringing it forward a month in advance because of the water plant treatment projects.
And in the budget, we'll do the public hearing, and that's why we're scheduling that for the term.
Totally separate, yes.
Okay.
So if this were to be passed on February 14th, Lisa and Neary would make the needed budget amendments, and we would be authorized to move forward with the new capital projects on this list. You've already authorized the other projects on this list at previous sessions.
Right. Any questions on that? Any questions on the phone? Just didn't want to forget you guys. Make sure that if you get a chance, if you wanted to ask anything. Now the Ice Rank naming rights.
Yep, and I'll ask Jill, the Assistant City Manager, to come up again, since she worked specifically on the naming rights and specifically with Guy.
I want to thank Brian and Guy for giving me a chance to work with folks at you. And I had a really great time and learned a lot. And I do want to talk a little bit about David. So David grew up in Batavia and was a fixture at the Batavia Ice Arena playing in the Genesee Amateur Hockey Association for the Ramparts since 1983. He later went on to captain the Batavia Ice Devils to a state final runner-up in 1995. David was a passionate leader throughout his career, and the Batavia Ice Arena was like a sanctuary for him. If David wasn't home, you could find him at the arena at skate and shoot after school or at a Friday night open skate. The Batavia Ice Arena meant a great deal to him. So David was tragically killed in a motor vehicle accident November 2nd, 2006. And this marks the 15th anniversary of his passing. One of the things that I found most heartwarming was that a foundation out of the tragedy was started. And over the course of these years since 2006, the foundation has donated over $80,000 to youth sports. So trips for high school baseball, softball, cross country, awards and scholarships, the AHA team sponsorship, sports boards and fencing for youth playing fields, cross ice boards for Ramparts, girls' softball equipment, and an AED defibrillator for youth football. So they've had a huge impact in our area. So part of the agreement is the erection of signage on the Ice Arena's facade. One sign to be painted on an interior wall for Pellegrino Auto Sales, holding two events up to two hours each for the arena annually, and also be included in all promotional material and other media, press releases, et cetera, in cooperation with the city and Brooklyn Management. Are there any questions?
Any questions? Tammy, do you have any questions?
No.
John, any questions?
No.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? Bob, go ahead. One of the clauses, hold two events up to two hours each into the arena annually. What kind of events?
That could be, maybe a small party or a get-together, some sort of foundation event. That's up for discussion with not only Brooklyn and the city, but also the foundation and Mr. Pellegrino. But as part of the contract, you're allowed to hold those two events. But as part of the contract, they're allowed to hold those two events.
And the other question I had is, hopefully it could also be resolved, I think the attorney could best answer it. In the lease, it says that the city sells the arena, then, you know, the attorney with 15 days notice, this contract. But what in the event that the city gets an offer, because Furlan isn't going to be forever, to lease the arena and someone else wants to put their name on the front, what would we do in that particular case, George?
Out, out clause, and we can address that as necessary.
Okay, yeah.
There's an opt-out clause, we can address that as necessary, but obviously anything settled in negotiations while in contracts.
Thank you. Hopefully it can be negotiated peacefully, everybody's happy, so. But I, I do appreciate the fact that we have sponsors coming forward, it's great, thank you.
Um, just in case you couldn't hear that at home, um, the question was, if someone else leases the ring besides Furlan, what would happen to the naming rights? And George said there's opt-out clauses and we would, could iron that out at a time when, if that were to come pa, to pass, they would iron that out. Also, you might hear some weird noises in the background. Uh, every once in a while a claw goes by and it gets really loud in here because it's shaking the building, so that's what you're hearing. Uh, so I hope, they look like they gotta clear it off now, so maybe we won't hear it, but that's what you're hearing, if you hear that big rumbling. Um, any other questions on the, on the arena? Thank you again, guys, really appreciate it. Um, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Yeah.
Mr. McGinnis? And a second, Mr. Baikowski? If you recall the vote, please?
Councilmember McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Tammy?
Yes.
Baikowski?
Yes.
Baikowski?
Yes.
Stino?
Yes.
Penali?
That's the penali.
Yes.
Okay. Could I cross the queen of the voter, we'll go right into the budget review session if you'd like?